I'll call this meeting to order.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Great. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
Can I give a brief update on the Meadow conversation that was started last week? It's not an action item, but under the committee reports.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty. The consent agenda tonight consists of approval of the minutes of the June 8, 2020 council meeting, approval of June 12, 2020 payroll in the amount of $123,725.03, approval of USDA step one debt in the amount of $12,975, approval of co-bank interim financing debt in the amount of $26,965.74, approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $1,259,331.25, approval of state revolving fund debt in the amount of $679,456.25, approval of the May finance report, a resolution approving cigarette permits, acceptance of library board minutes, resolution of the 2021 salaries for city employees, resolution of employment for a park and recreation department, approval of a liquor license for some wines, the Walton Club and Torino Pizza and Steakhouse, approval of claims in the amount of $541,294.94, and we had one claim over $75,000 to Norris Asphalt in the amount of $165,982.22. Take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Moved by?
Seven minutes.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay. Under public forum and appearances, we did have a written request by Bart Walton. I'll just read it real quick. Subject to be discussed: COVID-19 safety precautions. I want to voice my opposition to this, to the decision to no longer require masks at the rec center. We are trying to avoid another general shutdown. We all need to do our part until the virus is completely under control. If you look at countries where the virus has been successfully controlled, everyone wears the mask. Wearing masks in public places has been shown to be the number one best measure to reduce spread of the virus. Thank you, Bart Walton. You know, I did, Calvin, go ahead. I did talk to him yesterday. I called him because he had left me a message also, and, you know, he noted that on our doors at Park and Rec, it does say masks recommended. And then he pointed out that if they're recommended, that our staff should be wearing masks. So I asked Calvin to come tonight and kind of talk about, you know, how they came up with their decisions and however you want, whatever you want to say.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, it was, it was my decision. So when we first started out with the reopening process of this, we had some pretty strict rules and policies in place just because there was so much unknown going on with this. We didn't know if our, if our doors would be flooded with people coming in. We didn't know if anybody would come in. We had no idea. So at one point, we, we did require people to wear masks. And over a few weeks of monitoring this and, you know, and seeing the people come in and stuff like that, so we have moved all of our equipment. We have spread everything out. And we are fortunate enough to have a facility like the Cambridge Sportsplex that is so big that we've spread everything out to where everything is over six feet apart from each other. So to me, it didn't make sense to require somebody to wear a mask in there working out if they, if all of our equipment is over six feet apart from each other. And the other reason with it being summertime, our, you know, it's every year, our attendance drops. People are outside. They're in the parks. They're recreating elsewhere. So with that being said, is we've now allowed a limit of six people in the large weight room and two in the small weight room because that's the number right there that'll keep people six feet away from each other. Now, we can't control it if they're walking right past each other or anything like that, but when they are there working out at the facility, we have equipment or we have restrictions in certain areas to where you have, you can be six feet, you'll be six feet apart from each other. You know, I, I took a photo today on my phone. I don't know if anybody wants to see it, but it was kind of a, a long shot of down at the Cambridge Sportsplex there where we have equipment moved out onto the gym court to allow people to be, to spread out. There's, was two individuals down there on two different pieces of cardio equipment. Those are the only ones down there at the time. They're probably 30 feet away from each other. I guess I don't think that they should be required to have to have a mask on. I'm not saying that you shouldn't wear a mask, that we're against masks or anything like that, but we're giving them the option. If they, if they want to wear the mask, then they can wear the mask. And we do recommend them and it's, but there's just some cases to where, to me, you know, a lot of times they say, if you can't social distance, wear a mask. Well, we are really enforcing the social distancing aspect of it by moving the equipment around and keeping people away from each other. So.
Great. Thank you.
So you're following all the state guidelines?
Oh, yeah.
The type of phase that we're in, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we've got-
More stringent or less stringent? Are we more stringent than the state guidelines?
In regards to the-
Anywhere.
Anywhere. I mean, the social distancing, that's the main thing. I mean, we've got signage up everywhere. And then the limitations in the rooms that are smaller, then, you know, that's why we put a number on that so that, you know, if we were to just open up the weight room and say, all right, you know, anybody can come in, that would be a complete violation of social distancing. But by us just allowing six in at a time, then people are going to be able to spread out from each other.
Just one other question. So have people begun to schedule basketball and volleyball games with us winter?
No.
You haven't heard anything from them?
No, I haven't heard anything on that. But, you know, it's, at some point down the road, we're going to have to start discussing that because we host JV freshman volleyball games there. And, you know, the, sometimes those go later in the evening and you've, you know, I, you've got people all on one court there too. So it's just something that's going to have to be discussed as well.
There are also after-school programs that-
And the after-school program that takes place too. So.
Have you had an opportunity, have you spoken with a public, our public health nurse about the precautions you're taking at the rec center?
No, the only thing, I, I get some stuff from Dan Miller. He's the safety inspector or the health inspector here in town. So I think I've got some stuff from him. And then we go on the CDC side and then basically listen to the governor when she puts stuff out there too. So.
Does a public health nurse know about the different precautions that we're taking at the rec center?
We had that, what was that?
The press conferences?
The press conference, that last press conference. And, and she was here too. And, and I gave my spiel and all that. So.
And there wasn't any comment from, from that office as far as you know?
No.
I think Chris has been pretty vocal when she sees things that have not been under state guidelines. Because I know some places where she's had to call or talk to someone, a business or-
So, yeah, I just think it sounds like it's important that she be aware of it and she's sort of passed on it. That's a good thing.
And there are other gyms in town doing the same thing, keeping people six feet apart but not requiring a mask while exercising. I went to a restaurant in Iowa City this week. It's, can't eat with the mask on either. So mask or four when social distancing isn't possible. If you can maintain the six feet, it's hard for my droplets to reach six feet away. So I think you guys are in the, in the good.
Yeah. I think our whole thing was trying to spread things out more. And, because I know everybody, it's a little difficult doing cardio in a mask too. So.
Great. Okay. No other questions from council? Everybody's comfortable? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Calvin, for coming.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to resolution, action items and ordinances. Our first resolution is consideration of awarding a contract for professional services for archaeological survey for the 2020 childcare facility project. Erin, we're going to get Holly Berg on the line. Is that correct?
Hello?
Hey, Holly, this is Erin Quaker. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Hey, we've got the council here. I'm going to put you on speakerphone and-
Yep. All right.
However you want to go, go right ahead.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead. You're on speakerphone.
All right, perfect. I was watching on YouTube, so I was ready to go. Uh, good evening, everyone. Holly Berg from Area 15 Regional Planning Commission. And the contract tonight is a part of the CDBG Childcare Facility Project. That is for Jefferson County kids, but as it's a CDBG project, it goes through the city. Part of the environmental review process is needing to have some archaeological work done just to ensure there's no historic remains or artifacts in the area of the project. And so that is done through using an archaeological consultant. So procurement process was done. Erin was one of the representatives, as well as Josh Lehrby, to review proposals from firms. Four firms responded to the proposal and the highest ranking, or the number one ranked one was Midwest Archaeological Consultants. And so the contract is there. The project, the funds will be reimbursed from the grant to the city for this project. So the prices in there, there is two different prices listed in the contract. It just depends on what level of review is needed, which will be determined by the archaeological consultant. So it's a city expense, but it gets reimbursed 100% from the CDBG grant.
Any questions?
That was my question. Who's going to pay for this? But the grant is, okay.
The grant will pay for it.
How do we approve the contract?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Flornoy, second by Gandy to approve this contract. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously to approve that contract for the archaeological survey where the child, new childcare center is going to be located. Next resolution is consideration, consideration of amending the fee schedule. Melanie?
So last year, you passed a resolution establishing fees for different types of city equipment when we have to use them on private property. And included in that resolution, you established a price for cold patch. And this is an asphalt mixture that we have out at our shop that people can buy at a per ton cost. If they've got to fill a pothole in their driveway or leveling out an area, they can purchase it from it, from the streets department. If you go to Lowe's or Menards and buy this, you buy a 50-pound bag for $25, which comes out to be like $1,000 a ton. What we are proposing, instead of having a set dollar amount in the resolution, is that we, the resolution states our cost of the materials plus $25 is what we would charge as a citizen for picking that up. And that $25 covers our costs to bring the material from Tamoa to here. So we, again, we buy it at a bulk rate. We use it mainly, but occasionally we have some citizens, the school district typically buys some off of us. So we'd like to establish the rate of our cost plus $25 per ton.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a minimum, a minimum $25 charge? Or is that prorated by the ton?
Prorated.
Okay.
It's $1,000 a ton plus $25. Regardless of how many tons you take.
Um, our cost is $110. So the cost right now with this batch would be $135 a ton. If you buy half of a ton, it's, you know, half of 135. So yes, you're, you're correct. It is prorated. It's just we're giving them a really good deal. The, the $25 isn't much, but it's still a much better deal than if someone would go buy an individual bag.
Melanie, over what period of time does this motion, are this resolution supposed to cover?
Um, the original resolution for those fees suggested that we look at the, look at the equipment costs every two years. So as we go into the budget season in October and November, we'll be looking at updating those fees for the equipment, which would also include anything else on that list.
So does this resolution allow for that or state that we're going to revisit the fee structure? Because these fees, it looks like in the exhibit or the attachment, these fees are fixed.
Oh, the equipment fees are fixed, and that was passed last year. The only thing we're modifying with this resolution is the cold patch. The original resolution last year stated that we would look at it every two years. This one's just coming up because with everything going on in the world, asphalt prices have gone up, which means that our costs are higher and we need to account for that.
So in this, in this resolution, it's, it is going to be reviewed in a fixed period, within a couple of years, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so it was moved by Anderson and second by Flornoy to approve this change of the cold mix to the tonnage plus $25 per ton. Any other discussion or questions? Not? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously. The next resolution is accepting the proposed street improvements, resurfacing 2020 as final.
Um, so this project included a three-inch asphalt overlay over several different seal coat streets in the city, including Polk Avenue, 8th Street, Gier, and 12th Street. This was awarded to Norris Asphalt earlier this year, and they came in and did the work the last week of May, first week of June, really quickly. And so they have completed all of that work. The final cost of construction was $173,787.60, which was just slightly under the contract price since we pay them based off of what is actually used rather than the estimated amount. So that work is complete, and we would recommend accepting it as complete and beginning the two-year warranty period.
Move to approve.
Okay, moved by Rasmussen, second. Second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not? Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Or sorry, Hallie?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously to take that resurfacing as final. The next is the action item of consideration of award of contract for solid waste and recycling services. Doug, you want to give us an update?
Sure. All right, so we don't have a contract attached to the agenda, but we have, we've had two meetings with Waste Management, the last one on Friday, the 19th of June, where Dave Schaub told us basically that Waste Management had rejected our offer, the people above him had rejected our offer of a 10-year moving average on the CPI with a 3% cap. And he came back with the, what you see here in front of you, the, his, his suggestion is that we have an escalating three and a half, or cap, starting at the, well, 2.3% this year for the first increase, and then 3%, 3 and 1/4% the third year, and then 3 and 1/2% years four and five.
Doug, is this in the minutes of your?
Yes.
At the bottom. It's on the second.
Sorry.
On the second tab.
There we go. It's the June 19.
Yes.
So that averages out to a 3.1% average increase over the next five years. So Tom moved and I seconded that we bring this to council and recommend approval.
So it's a five, what he's suggesting is a five-year contract?
That was what the RFP was for, is for a five-year contract.
Okay. And we had asked for a 3% cap and he's moving it up. How much?
Well, they asked for 3 and 1/2%. We, we wanted no more than 3%. We settled at 3.1% on average.
Okay.
Over five years. We're getting 2.3% the first year.
You guys are satisfied with that? The committee, rather?
I think so. Yeah, well, we, we moved to recommend to council to accept this.
So that means you're satisfied with it?
They were satisfied.
The difference with what we asked for and what they were offering came to 6 and 1/2 cents per month. So-
The customer, right?
Yeah. So 70, what's that, 78 cents a year or whatever. So.
Right.
Alrighty. You want to make a formal motion?
Sure, I would move that we, I mean, everything else in the contract would remain unchanged, except for this escalator clause. So.
Or how about recommend to approve it in principle until we get it in?
Well, right, we'll accept this clause or this rate schedule here for the escalator clause. And then it would go into effect July 1, but we wouldn't have a written completed contract until probably the first meeting in July. And I already told that to Dave and he was happy with that resolution. So we would, in essence, raise prices on July 1 to $13, which we've already approved. These escalators wouldn't kick in until next July.
Until July of 2021.
Right. That's where the first 3% increase would come into play. So I'd make the motion that we accept that escalator arrangement.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
So we're going to have a contract review when?
Every year, annually.
When's the next time we're going to be reviewing a contract?
It would be in probably May of 2021.
What about this contract? The one that we're just, we're negotiating? Are we negotiating a contract now?
Yes, what we're doing now.
Okay, so we have one to review. This escalator that we're agreeing to is in place, begins in July of 2021?
No, it goes into, goes into effect July of 2020, this year. Our current contract expires at the end of June.
Okay.
But it doesn't go to 3% until 2021?
We agreed on a $13 base, which is a 2.3% increase, starting in July 1, 2020. And then July 1 of 2021, there would be a 3% increase on that $13.
So do we, or we're going to have a new contract beginning July 1?
No, this would be a five-year contract, and these are the rates increases that we would see over the next four years.
Do we have a new contract coming July, July of this year?
Yes.
Okay. When will be, when will, as council, when will we be able to review that contract?
I'm hoping the first meeting in July.
Well, because we've been negotiating with the, the rates and stuff, we haven't been able to sit down and say, all right, write a contract. We just finalized the negotiation on Friday. So Waste Management, Doug Schaub and I will have worked on that to get the contract back to the council after getting approval from our attorney to get it to the council. We're hoping that we get the approval for, or get the final written document to you for the first meeting in July. The, in principle, we're approving it as the RFP was approved with the escalator as for, going forward, but we'll have a written contract for the first meeting in July.
The contract will call, will be effective as of July 1?
Correct.
It's unchanged from the current contract, except for the base rate for charging $13 plus this escalator clause.
I see. I see. It's unchanged except for that.
It's unchanged except for that.
Okay. That makes it clear to me. Thanks. That was-
I didn't, sorry.
Not clear. Thank you.
Yeah, we weren't, there's only two things we were negotiating.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the table. Flornoy, motioned, and Toohill, second. Any other additional questions or discussion? Great. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously to accept having the contract written ultimately, and we'll see that contract next meeting. Okay, ordinance number 1187, amending the city code 20.12 and 20.14 concerning enforcement and penalties related to animal control. This is the second reading. Motion to move from second to third and final?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Anderson, second by Gandy. A question, Doug?
No, no, no. I listened to what she said at first.
Okay. Katie, do you mind just doing a real quick review?
Yep, we did a review of the ordinance as it is on the books. And in an effort to bear the responsibility on the pet owners in town, we moved the penalties to the first offense being a civil infraction. And then moving the penalties up, we started at $50 and then went up $25 increments. We're trying to enforce the vaccination, the fees for the impoundment. We're just trying to put the, the ownership back on the people who own the dogs that seem to be repeat offenders in town.
And so that means the police can ticket them right away?
Right away.
So when I got chased a quarter of a mile yesterday morning, down Glass, I rode by a little dog.
You could have called and if-
A police car went by. I didn't flag him down, but I was thinking about it.
Yeah. No, and, and we hope that by making it a little more enforceable, that our officers that, that get the calls will feel like they can take it on that first, you know, that first call now. So we're hoping to make it a little, little more enforceable by the officers here in town.
Okay, any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Great. That passed unanimously, unanimously. Next, ordinance 1188, amending city code 20.78 concerning airport height regulations. Melanie, do you want to just do a quick review again?
Um, so these changes are to bring the scope of the ordinance in line with current FAA regulations and also the current size of the airport. The other thing that it changes is it allows for more county-city interaction when there are any disputes related to buildings being built around the airport.
All right, thank you.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Rasmussen, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not? Please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Great. That was approved unanimously to amend our city ordinance regarding airport height regulations to the third and final reading next, next meeting. Okay, ordinance 1189, amending city code 11.08 concerning list of trees permitted. You want to say anything, Michael?
Just the list that we've now approved two times. We got to do it two more times. So I'll make a motion to approve this amendment, move it to the third and final reading at our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion? Not? Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pam? Toohill?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Approved unanimously. Under the mayor's report, I just have some reappointments I left at your station tonight. Animal Control Board, again, these are all reappointments. These aren't any new people. Monica Mathias, Corley Burns, and Robert Wiegert. The Arbor Committee, Ray Lane. Beautification Commission, Jerry Moore. CVB Board, Tammy Dunbar and Alyssa Ward. Historic Preservation, Scott Renneker, Mark Schaefer. And Fairfield Public Library Board, Michael Porter. Request that you accept those reappointments. Yes, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you. Those passed unanimously. Want to remind citizens to do their census. You go to 2020census.gov. If you haven't done that yet, please do so. And I wanted to also give just a couple little updates since our last meeting on a couple things that, you know, we're reviewing at city level. First off is training for city staff, including Police Department. I, we have, through the Iowa Municipal Workmen's Comp Association, all our staff will be having diversity and sexual harassment training in August, September timeframe?
September, probably.
Yeah, okay. So thanks, Erin, and, and the staff for putting that together. And thank you very much for doing that. So pleased to hear that that's, that started. Also, the chief is going to talk a little bit on a couple of things. What's happening at the Police Department reviewing of policies and procedures there? Can you update us?
Uh, yes, thank you. Our policies have been set for several years per one of our procedures for those policies. We- We, um, unrelated to anything that's going on, once a year we spot check, um, any policies that may have had a concern, or we just pick a couple policies, and, and when I say we, there's a committee of, uh, usually the supervisors and a couple of the newer officers. Um, just sit down in a quick meeting and, and review. We call it our policy committee, um, get input, if it, it's anything from is it working to is it even needed? Is it repetitive? To say we have a lot of policies is probably the understatement of the night. We have, great example, when you guys were talking about airport, uh, we actually have a policy in case there's an airline or an airplane crash in Jefferson County. So, when I say we have a policy for everything, we have addressed pretty much everything in policy form. A lot of it is from talking to other departments and, and working with, um, other agencies and, um, just trying to make sure that there's at least procedures written down for a lot of the, the main stuff that law enforcement might do. So, once a year we do a spot check, once every five years we do what we call, um, uh, the annual, where we go through the entire policy, uh, all the policies. It's quite time-consuming, as you can imagine, it's, it's not necessarily a committee, um, because it just takes too long. So, usually what happens, not usually, every five years, uh, one of the lieutenants and I will start down through the policies, and any questions we have then we'll bring to the committee, um, for their input, uh, if we have concern, because it's always nice to hear, um, from several, not just me and a lieutenant, or lieutenant and I trying to decide, what we need to do to our policies, and it just so happened we'd started January first in that procedure, our five-year. So we bumped up our, took, spent to the top of the list, uh, we should usually do an alphabetical order, but we took the committee our use of, of force, um, policy, our resistance, reporting policies, and, uh, any policies where use of force, um, might be mentioned in there, um, they basically went to the top of the list. We will continue doing, um, we made several recommendations, we just had the committee meeting last week, it had been scheduled for a little while, um, and it was, uh, in the evening last Wednesday. Took several notes, um, and then, uh, we, the lieutenants and I are going to sit down and, and tweak some, uh, issues. The, the biggest thing it identified was, uh, we want to be real specific on, uh, new, uh, equipment we've received and, and try not to order, uh, people with policies, but try to address everything. So, obviously, we, we always ask, do we need this policy, and the answer is usually yes, we always need policies, but, um, we take the time to look each policy, um, specifically every five years, we're in that process now.
Great, thank you very much. And could you also address if there were, if there was a complaint against an officer, what, what's that process? So, the public understands?
Certainly. We have, um, a very detailed internal investigation, uh, procedure we have for years. It is a lot easier for us, um, just because in law enforcement or police work, we're very used to doing criminal investigations, and, uh, internal investigation is treated the same way. If we have any concern or a concerned citizen, either one, so this concerned citizen contacts me, or a supervisor comes up and says, hey, I'm not for sure, we need to take a look at, at this call. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a citizen filling out a, a written report like, uh, we used to. We did away with that policy several years ago, where it can just be verbal, maybe they don't want to put it in writing. Um, but I tell them upfront that any concern will be investigated, I will, it will investigate it fully. We treat it like any other investigation, so a supervising investigator will be assigned to it to look at all the evidence, talk to all the witnesses, look at all the recordings, and interview. Usually, and, and when then, when I'm talking to the citi-, citizen, I will explain to them, uh, our policy is real simple, they have thirty days to investigate it and report back to me, and they actually first report to Lieutenant Consella, as she's in charge of internal investigations, then they bring it to, uh, me, uh, my office. And so, we like that policy because three supervisors have looked at it. Um, it's, it's just not me getting upset, or it's just not, you know, maybe a sergeant getting upset, it's three supervisors have looked at it and said, do we have an issue, don't we have an issue? Um, but it's treated like any other criminal investigation, where everybody has a right to be heard, um, and that, that's kind of what the investigator's job for the thirty days is to thoroughly investigate it and report back to Lieutenant Consella and then me. Um, I do tell the citizen, um, there are some things under our policy I can definitely tell them. If we have, uh, seven or eight different categories of findings of an internal investigation, everything from founded to partially founded, um, and I explain each one. Obviously, founded means, um, our employee made a mistake. Partially founded is self-explanatory now, um, so part of the complaint was founded, and maybe another part. We have exonerated, uh, we also have one that's a, a policy failure, it's not necessarily officers, it's the policy we have, or a lack of equipment, or a lack of training, um, so we have many different categories. I report that to the citizen that files the complaint. I tell them upfront that, uh, due to employee confidentiality laws at both the state and federal level, I can tell you what has happened with the internal investigation, I can't tell you anything about employee discipline, and you also cannot assume there was, uh, discipline, or assume there was no discipline, I just can't discuss it, so I tell them upfront that, um, if I tell you it's founded, I can't then tell you what the, that the officer was suspended, or, um, the law doesn't allow me to do that, so they're very clear upfront. A lot of, sometimes citizens will say, well, I don't want that done. Um, we still do an investigation, just to make sure, uh, we still assign a supervisor, just to make sure, the supervisor talks to the officers that witnessed it, any other citizens that we'll talk to and that witnessed it and watches the recording, just to make sure there isn't an issue. Sometimes complaints won't cooperate with our investigators, we can't force them to, uh, sit down and interview with us. We offer to go to them, we offer to call them, um, but it's, like I said, it's the same way in a criminal investigation, we like to listen to all sides of the story, and then present it, um, to the courts, um, and that's kind of what we do with the internal investigation, although it's presented to my office at the end. It still gives everybody the opportunity to have transparency. A lot of times I will report back to them, if it's not an active prosecution, I can actually sit down and, and show them the recording, that helps quite a bit, um, because I've had a lot of citizens very upset. I don't think the citizens are being dishonest with me, it's perception at a very stressful time. There were, I guarantee they thought they were totally calm when they watched the recording a lot of times in, in our, in my office, they'll say, I didn't realize I was that out of control and the officer was calm, but it's not that they're, uh, it's just nice to calmly win, like, you know, there's not a huge urgency going on or fight going on to, to watch all the recordings that we have. It is a lot easier now, uh, because we do record almost everything from several different angles. So instead of having to, you know, when I first started, we had to talk to all the witnesses, and there were hardly whoever was recording, well, now you're right there on the chest of the officer, and you're experiencing the call, and you can have them experience a call too. So, when we say we have a pretty advanced, um, internal investigation, I, we utilize it, we keep percentages, how much founded every year, how much is unfounded, um, so, and a lot of that's public record if it's requested.
Great, thank you, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
For that, uh, explanation, yeah, so I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions for chief, so go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, chief, uh, you, thank you for that, uh, exposition, that report. You talked about two different types of review. One has to do with policy, which you conduct on an annual basis, I believe, and also every five years.
Yes, sir.
That's the review conducted internally by the police?
Internal review, I should also mention, um, I always explain to citizens, this is the first step we give them. When I first started, we, we basically told them, if, if you have a problem with the police.
No, I'm talking about the, the policy, I'm talking about policy, that part, that first part, the policy.
I'm sorry, what was your question and answer?
On an annual basis, and every five years, I think you said?
Yes.
You conduct policy review?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The complete one every five years, yes.
Okay, that's, that's a review conducted by the police?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, do you take any outside review, is there any outside review?
Other than attorneys, um, no, we've, we've offered, um, reviews. We, we've asked a lot of citizens' participation in a lot of it, and I understand it is difficult. Uh, we've, we've had a lot of public meetings, everything from coffee with a cop to, uh, which is more of an informal to, um, you know, a citizens' academy where we sat down, um, and it actually had them go through police training, in a classroom. So there was some understanding. Policies aren't, I, we can't get coffee with a cop attended. And I don't blame people, I, everybody's very busy, um, a lot of people don't have, we had coffee with a cop a couple of years ago, we were doing it once a month. We would send four or five officers, and we usually had the biggest part of the, uh, the, of the group there. Usually it was two to three people would, would come to talk to us. A lot of times there wasn't any, to the point where we discontinued it, it just was taking too much time. I'm not complaining, um, but there's a lot of outreach that we've tried to do, um, and policies are even more time-consuming, um, so it, it's, the hiring process is the same way. We, we do it so much, uh, at a certain time, promotional testing, uh, we ask for citizens, um, we were asking a lot of them to participate in even a promotional exam, um, out of, uh, our community supervisors, we've asked them to come, but it's the same thing, it's, it's, I've been asked the same thing to go to Burlington when there's a sergeant testing, to be on the committee, because I'm an outside, I don't have any bias going in, I don't, you know, like Officer Jim more than Officer John, so going in, it's, it's strictly, um, but we struggle with it because we're just so busy, I can't take a whole day away to go help Burlington Police Department out, um, they're the same way with us, so. And citizens, when we've asked them, uh, for assistance, don't have the time to commit to hiring for promotions, for policy review, it's just too much of their time, and, and it's probably ha-, going to have to be. So we really struggle with that, we really do, I would like.
So do you have external review of your policies?
Definitely.
You do?
Yes, yes.
Who?
We have several attorneys, um, and, like, like I was saying before, when, when I first started, when there was an internal investigation, we just.
No, I'm just talking not about internal investigation, just policy, you mentioned every.
Well, yeah, it's kind of the same thing. There, there are, anytime we're requesting a policy, an attorney requests a policy because they talked to a client, we send them the complete copy of our policy.
But I'm, I mean, before that, before an attorney investigates or is representing a client, I mean, when you conduct your annual and your every-five-year review of policy, do you have external input or external review of that policy?
No, sir, it's internal.
The second point is, or the second, I think you're talking about is when a citizen makes a complaint about an officer?
Correct.
What the process is?
Yes.
As I, as I'm hearing you, the process is entirely internal in terms of review, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there any external review, if a citizen makes a complaint to the police? Other than the internal investigation which the police conducts, is there any external review of that complaint?
That's, that's a great question, and I apologize for not mentioning, I'm tired. It is, it, I'm really glad you guys asked, Mr. Gandy, because it's a first step. And it's a first step we didn't used to have, well, basically mediation, um, before, uh, when I first started, anybody that wanted to come in and complain about the police, they were told, you need to go talk to an attorney, and, um, the attorney can request all their authority, and attorneys are expensive, um, and it's quite difficult for, um, like most departments, we wanted to be more user-friendly, uh, several years ago, and instead of, uh, having a separate, at, at least have that first step, um, to where we can show the, the concerned citizen, um, all the information of the recordings and all the witnesses, and at least all the points of view instead of one. Uh, a lot of my complaints are, um, about half of my complaints are citizens not even at the scene. Uh, in other words, um, son goes home and tells mom that the officer arrested me, and it was terrible, and, um, and, and that's half the complaints, and we still take those third-party complaints, and we still investigate them, because we want to be transparent, we want to be open, um, but it's the first step to get that information out so they can decide, instead of, uh, because at the end of it, I always tell them, you also have two choices. If you're not happy with our decision, we have an appeals process through the city, plus the state of Iowa has a, a very easy, um, appeals process through the Omsbuzzman Office, which is a free service, and it's anytime they feel the government has, um, violated whatever state law or constitution, you can contact the Omsbuzzman's Office, and they, and we work, uh, anytime they're leading an investigation, we have to give them all the information. So we give them the appeals process if they're not happy with mediation. We just like that one step because it gives them more of a voice than having to talk to an attorney, and, you know, usually when our attorney gets involved in their attorney, it's more of a confrontational type of, um, this usually is more of an explanation, um, this was done, we should have done this differently, or this is why this was done, um, there's, there's always all points of view, um, but at the end of it, it's actually in the letter that I send out just to, even when I talk to them, we send a formal letter out, that this is the finding, the internal, it's founded, or the, it's exonerated, meaning the officer was totally exonerated, or it's founded, meaning, um, the officer violated the policy or procedure. If you don't believe in my findings, the phone number for the Oms, uh, the state Omsbuzzman Office is, and I don't know, it's at the bottom of the form, feel free to call them, so we actually give them the information. We don't just say, go talk to an attorney, um, because we want to give them every option. Uh, so I, I'm glad you asked that, ours is the first step. We solve a lot of our internal complaints before it has to go to district court.
Initially, the police investigates itself, this complaint?
Yes, sir.
Files, and it will submit a report, or you will send a letter to the citizen or whoever is making the complaint, of whether there's an exoneration or some founded complaint?
Yes, sir, they get the letter, we keep a complete file for all internal investigations.
If the citizen has a concern about, doesn't think that the finding is, is, uh, fair, or to their, or, they don't agree with it, they can appeal it to the state?
State Omsbuzzman Office or talk to a.
Is the, the file that's generated, is generated by the police alone?
Uh, no, the Omsbuzzman Office, actually, sides, it is, is more for their side.
Does, I mean, I mean the file, the information that the police have generated in their report, the data, that's internally prepared, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, is that what the Ombudsman's, uh, Ombudsman has access to?
Yes, they request, they officially do to us, um, if they want to look at any recordings, we have to cooperate as long as, I always got to give this feel, as long as it doesn't interfere with the actual criminal prosecution. If it interferes with the criminal prosecution, we just have to wait till court's done, the criminal part of it, and then we can give them the, in other words, I can't send it to another agency and try it before the person accused of a crime has their bail in court. So, the, and we tell the Omsbuzzman Office that this is still, uh, we're waiting for the prosecution, we'll let you know immediately when it's done and when through the appeals process, um, because the person has a right to their bail in court on the criminal matter. Usually that isn't an interference point, but I always have to check that, I have to always have to check with prosecutors, obviously.
And it's, it's a difficult job, it's a difficult job you guys do, I think that, I know why, I think you're, you're taking this time, we appreciate it, so that citizens who are, who will. so that citizens who will watch this will understand the police process. So I'm asking these questions because I want to understand it better for my benefit. And I think perhaps there may be other people who have an interest too.
Definitely, definitely. We also have other good news. The mayor mentioned to me tonight that once we get through COVID and a couple of other things, probably the end of July, we would like to start having a town hall meeting where we can sit down three or four and just answer questions directly from citizens that have concerns. We are looking forward to that because sometimes they're not as well attended as, than when that's the topic of the day. So these are the best times to have town halls and explain, you know, if, if I came up two months ago and said, hey, we're going to have a policy meeting, who wants to ask questions about a policy? I'm not going to get any questions.
Here's what I hear, when I hear what you're saying, when I'm listening to what you're saying, and here's what I think that a concern I have and maybe other citizens have, I don't know, to what extent are the police being reviewed? You're talking about the policy being internally reviewed, but there's not much, if any, external review, that is by citizens, for example. And then you, you describe a process where a citizen may have a complaint or someone may have a complaint about police activity and the review is internal. So it's the police looking in, are investigating the police. For the citizen to go beyond that or for citizens to review what the police do is, there's more steps they have to take, more expense they have to incur. So that's a, that's just something when I'm listening to you that, that I, I just, I'm curious about and want to know more about and, and think there may be some concern about, well, to what extent are police being beyond themselves, beyond the, the police themselves? To what extent are they being monitored, right, by the citizenship, by the citizenry, by the, by the city in our case, by the city of Fairfield? And in listening to what you're saying, I, I don't know to what extent that, that police are, have that kind of review. And it's, it's going to be, I think it's going to be when you have the town halls, I think there may be a topic you can expect to have questions about.
I appreciate that. And the big, the big picture is, we get this a lot in the job. It's actually a complaint the other way. There's a lot of people that think police can come in and solve civil law matters or demand something from a person. But, and there's a lot of times that we're explaining that this country we live in is a free country that limits very strongly government influence on the private citizen's right to do whatever. And there's always that over, that oversight that we face all the time. And it's statewide, nationwide, is our court system. We tell people all the time that we don't arrest you, you're not guilty of anything yet. You have your day in court. We just have to have a level of probable cause to arrest you. But later on, to be founded as guilty of this crime, you have to be shown beyond a reasonable doubt in court. An impartial person that is the boss of the police, they're overseeing the government to make sure we don't, wherever there it's from a search warrant to, you know, we talk about seizing vehicles with the snow ordinance and usually the police department's the most paranoid because we don't look at it as just getting the street open so we can get right there, so we can get it. What we're looking at is we're taking personal property from a citizen. And we may have to go later to, in front of a judge and explain why we're doing that. We can't just tow somebody without the city ordinances we have. But we have a high standard because we're always in court, because the courts always have oversight. So I, that's an excellent question, Mr. Gandy. Sometimes we forget to tell the normal citizens that we have very limited power because the courts, they're always charged, you know, that's what we train our officers. You may do everything the way we teach you and this law says you have to search a car this way and this is the only way you can search it. And then the Iowa Supreme Court says, nope, we're not going to allow that anymore. And even though you were doing it right when you did it, if the court changes their mind, it's still wrong now. So that case gets kicked out. And it's not, we don't want to get mad at the system because that's the country we live in. We live in a free country that limits the police department taking freedom away from citizens. And if a judge in Des Moines says, you're not going to do that, we have to stop doing that. So there is large oversight that, that a lot of citizens forget about. We just wanted to make it an easier one for the citizens to maybe satisfy them before they had to go to court. Because, you know, courts aren't scary. I know, Mr. Gandy, you've been in a lot of court. You're just telling your side of the story.
They can be scary. They can be scary.
There's some, there's some rules, but the judge is going to side on their, I mean, we have to show beyond a reasonable doubt in court. We probably are the hardest on ourselves because of the high standards that we have. So the police oversight, I, to say, my biggest complaint as the chief of police is, I've told officers all the time, I reviewed this and you really don't have to take that much abuse, both verbally and physically. But it's because they understand their recording, they understand that they have to go to court and justify everything. So they will let a citizen go on and on about yelling and screaming and, and even pushing and, and they won't respond to it. But a lot of times it's that police oversight because, you know, we tell our officers, I'm not saying you have to take it, but you have to expect it. We're always there when it's not the, the best time. And, and that gentleman's a nice guy all the other times. So we can't take it personal. So if he calls you every name in the book, he's not calling you the name. We expect you to remain professional. So there is police oversight, but it's because of the high professional standards. And I don't want to lower those standards by taking that away because it gives us the ability to review. Like I said, every time we're looking at a policy also, do we need to change this policy? Is it not working? Are we putting our citizens and officers in harm's way by having this policy? So we spend a lot of time because, quite frankly, we've done the job for 20 years. We understand, we have to answer, you know, there's not anybody in the private sector that has to answer the emails or has to answer the elected officials, but that's what we signed up for. That's the country we live in.
Also, when, when, to Paul's point here, when you go through the investigation and you're saying it, you know, it goes to the supervisor and then to Julie and then to you, and you give your findings to the citizen who complained, and if they're not happy with it, they can, they can go to the state, which you mentioned. Can they also go to our own civil service commission?
Definitely. They have, we, we have to kind of be careful because civil service was set up as kind of protection from the mean chief of police or the mean sheriff. They actually have oversight over me. So I can't discipline somebody unfairly or I can't hire my friend. They have to pass several tests and be on certified list. So we are hesitant to let civil service look at, we'd rather go to the court system just because they have a specific civil service law oversight over the police department. They're not basically based for complaints as much as they are hiring and.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
For distinguishing that.
I don't want an answer tonight. This is a food for thought. Yeah, you're right. There's a lot of interest in police all of a sudden, you know, because of recent events. I hear you and I heard your predecessor, Julie, and I know you guys have a lot of turnover, that you guys have a stressful job. So here's the food for thought, and you're going to get asked this at the town hall. So something you guys can discuss internally. Don't need an answer tonight. In what ways or what, what services the police provide could potentially be provided in other ways? So other cities have, have social workers handle civil disputes, not armed officers, and have had some success with that. Again, I don't want, I don't want you to try to come up with an answer on the spot. It's just something to think about. It's a lot of rethinking right now of what, do we ask police to do too much? We have a lot of turnover in your department and, and it's a problem because you train an officer and you lose him and you have to hire and train and you guys have high standards for your officers. So taking something off your plate could be part of that solution. And maybe when someone comes to your door and they're not an armed officer, that, that would deescalate just in that way. So I'm not going to cite examples at this time, but I'll probably be at one of those town halls and we'll ask that question if no one else does. But I'm almost guaranteeing you're going to get asked that question. So it's just something to think about between now and whenever we get to have that town hall.
I appreciate it, Mr. Kelly. I'm actually prepped on it. If you want, we, I've been received that by email a couple of times. It, it, it's, it's tough. I, you know, I've been asked about the San Francisco programs where the issue is, we just don't have those resources here. I wish we had 100 different city departments that handled everything from health and welfare to, you know, I could probably go on and on. Unfortunately, in Jefferson County in Fairfield, we have one tax paid mental health counselor. She isn't able to be on call 24 hours a day, obviously. So we then have to rely on the private sector, which makes government nervous, but we, we don't have a lot of options. And, and that's the biggest thing I've been trying to explain to, we don't have the huge resources of San Francisco. There's no way we could afford to employ all those counselors that it would take. We're going to have to have a huge budget. We would love that. We don't have those kind, we only have five or six with OptiMe is the, the private sector. We have, OptiMe has been very excellent about stepping in and supplying two appointments. They actually take out two appointments a day for anybody in crisis that doesn't need to go to inpatient, they'll, at our request, which is taking money away from them. That's two counseling sessions they could have with their patients, but it's there for emergencies. But we understand that the county and the city doesn't have a whole department of counselors. We have one counselor. I'm assuming at budget time, the citizens that would like to see this project probably are not going to want to like to see the price behind paying for that many counselors to respond. So we basically now do with what we, we know when somebody's in crisis, I, I've talked about it before, but when I first started at the police department, they said, don't call us. Mental health isn't a crime. Stop calling us. Well, we figured out over the years, we're still going to get calls when somebody is in crisis and they're out in all the streets screaming, they're going to call 911. Nobody's available to go. So we know it's going to have to be a police officer. So we especially train them knowing that we're going to get called at the crisis intervention team level, which is a national standard, more than half of our departments trained at that now, and they evaluate. It would be great if I had 10 counselors waiting on standby, but it's, I would love it. Hopefully you can get it in budget, Mr.
Well, let's talk about civil service or civil officer. We used to have somebody who patrolled downtown, checking tires.
Community service officer.
Yeah, he wasn't armed, but he enforced a very strict and, and limited local ordinance, which was the parking ordinance.
And once again, it's one employee and.
But, you know, we talked about getting a civil officer to do animal control. I don't think animal control is a full-time job. So again, you know, we can't do 10, but could we start with one? These are, you know, these are just questions that are worth considering. And so to say we don't have the budget, San Francisco is, you know, yes, it's true, but it's also obvious. It doesn't mean it's not worth exploring this possibility because you and I have talked about this and I talked to Julie about this. How do we determine the right number of officers for Fairfield? And I know we use a per capita, certain number of officers per citizens. Again, you know, these are going to be big, big questions that are going to be asked of you, like, why do we have to have that number? So what if instead of one more police officer, that person was a civil officer? So again, I'm not actually asking for an answer. Just want you to think about it because there are citizens who are going to be asking these questions at this town hall.
And just so you folks are aware, the issue is staffing. With one citizen, we had a community service officer. When it's only one in the department, it's only Monday through Friday, eight to four. So if the dog's barking at five, do we just ignore it till the next day? Especially if the officers are busy or do we address it? To have 24 hour coverage like we do at the police department, you need quite a bigger staff than, than just one. And, you know, that's when you start to get into four or five, you cover days off and sick and, you know, at least four, but then you're working 12 hour shifts and, and there's not a lot of counselors that, I, there's, there's a lot of, when you come to personnel, a community service officer was a great example. It's expensive. That's why we, we get away with the position to get a 14th officer. It's, salary is always the expense. If you want that service, that's what gets costly, costly.
Well, fire department has a lot of on-call officers. They're not paid, they have full-time jobs and they're paid a stipend to come out on call at a time, at a time of emergency. So again, you know, I don't, I'm not trying to have this conversation at this meeting. I want to just bring these ideas that you could have people on call.
I appreciate it.
Right? There's, there's other ways to look at it. So again, it just takes a little bit of thinking outside the box instead of, well, we've always done it this way. And if you can't go 10, 10 in, it's not worth doing one. You know, I just think we could, we could think about it differently. If you don't want to pay someone a full-time salary, then you can have some mental health professionals on call to come out with an officer at certain occasions. If that helps you guys, right, that reduces your workload, reduces the stress you guys are under, keeps people from leaving.
We still have that armed officer there.
Yeah.
And it's what we're doing now with the private sector. They're on call. They actually, one person will take on call each, and it's two or three nights and a lot of time, and our, our officers call them at three in the morning. They don't charge the city. And once again, OptiMe's been pretty well. So that's kind of the program we have. We still have the officer that has to respond because there are other things to consider, safety concerns, not only for that person, but also everybody else that's around that person. And the people we're having respond, if we have the ambulance respond and they're attacked, we have to then respond. So, so there are, there are a lot of, but that program is what we're using right now just with the private sector.
I do know that we do have one citizen. Doing a little research, looking at different programs, so.
Super.
You know, maybe, you know, this will be an ongoing discussion, okay? So I'm sure we'll hear about it again. We, we're creative. We think of a lot of interesting things and new things and maybe we can come up with something new. We'll just see what happens. So I have one quick question and that is related to the policy review based on this conversation. If we had one or two citizens, call me or any of the council members and say, hey, I would be open to reading through all those policies and giving you my feedback, are you open to that? I mean, I, it seems like you would be open to that. Is that okay?
Yes, yes.
That if, if we, if a citizen wants it, maybe we can put together a little committee to, you know, they can meet and go through things too, and then there can be some feedback between you and the department.
The only thing we're going to ask is, we're definitely open to that. It's the shortage right now until September.
Sure.
When we get the three officers back from the academy, the end of September.
Yeah, they could work independently.
Right now.
For that matter.
Even in this committee, two of them had to run out halfway through to, to back up the other officer. So right now, we're just critically short, but September, which would probably be. So, right now, we're just critically short, but September, which would probably be better for them to, through the summer months.
You're suggesting a committee separate from the police department?
Yeah, maybe, you know, I'm just saying, we might have people call.
Wouldn't be necessary that the police have to be present, yeah.
Just listening to this conversation that says, "Hey, I'm interested. I'd like to read through them."
The biggest issue we've had with that are the amount of questions it leads to.
Yeah.
And like you've seen in emails, we're happy to answer, but it's quite time-consuming and citizens, they quickly, it's asking a lot of them.
Yeah. So, it'd have to be in a controlled, organized environment, particularly and cognizant of time of the officers and all that kind of thing. So, okay, any other questions from anybody else? I really appreciate you, you were a little bit, I felt like you were a little bit on the hot seat here tonight, but...
That's what we're here for.
Appreciate you, you know, just sharing and I think it means a lot and it means a lot to our citizens for you to hear from you directly.
I know a lot of the council or the members of council have been contacted by their constituents, so we are happy to answer. I don't consider it on the hot seat, it's what we signed up to do. We're happy to answer those questions.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
City attorney report, John, do you have?
I've been listening very closely to him. Really? I don't usually do that, do I?
No.
When you have these town hall meetings, might be a good idea to circulate to the council ahead of that time, the policies and procedures manual we have right now. It's about 250 pages, it's about that thick, and it's evolved in the last 25 years. It's got all of the good recommendations from the National Association and the State Association of Police Officers, and then it's adopted as the internal guidelines. That's all internal in the department rather than external. That's sort of the starting point, but it's fairly complicated. And most of it's annotated. That means that there's cases behind most of those policies that are in there. So, you may have a real debate and discussion at a town hall meeting and you may at some point just have to tell people, "No, that's not the way that works." But I think it's healthy to get that all discussed. I was listening also to the idea of citizen volunteers. We have crisis intervention volunteers in town and that's who you're calling at 3:00 in the morning. That's a great program. 20 years ago, for at least a few months, I was a mental health referee. And I remember one night when eight law enforcement officers from the sheriff's and police department plus two ambulance attendants had a person that was on two or three kinds of drugs, took all of them to get him in a straitjacket to bring him on his knees to me so we could have a conversation, which was really not much of a conversation. But the things about some of that and what you involve your volunteer in is how you really tell them what they're getting into and what we're prepared to do to assure them they're not going to get knocked off in the middle of that experience. That's all part of your thought process on this. The other thing that's always a concern when you're talking about what you do when you have somebody that's part-time helping the officer or is stepping in and doing some things on a limited basis, is there is a whole body of law about delegating authority because in the end, you have one person that is authorized by the code to take control and exercise the authority. And when you start talking about other limited authorities or deputization or people that are there to help, but they really can't step up, you're going to run into all kinds of liability questions and that authority question comes back always to the police department. So, I guess my thought is, we're going to have some interesting discussions in the next few months while that's going on and all of those things, they come back to us in this room as far as what you finally do. But I was mouthing my own answers to what Dave was answering here about the reviews that take place because every so often you'll get some new inserts on your policies and procedures manual. And the police department has an entirely, some of it's the same as our personnel policies that the city has for all the departments, but most of it's also law enforcement-related. So, I would encourage that maybe there's a way to get that circulated around the council before this fall if you have town council meetings with town hall notions because you're going to probably run into a lot of people that want more explanation than you go prepared to give at that point. But enough said about that, this has been...
We'll probably need you there, John, too.
Well, I'm going to stay in the background, but hope that the materials are in everybody's hands because you do find raising questions and talking about it.
And I know when we first talked about it, it was really, I mean, it was to help people understand about some of the procedures investigations. For example, why is it taking so long? And how do you handle that? You know, it was, it certainly wasn't what's in the public domain right now, the conversation that we're having now. So, it, you know, it's certainly gotten more complicated in the last couple of weeks. And that's okay. I mean, it needs to be talked about, right? So, anyway, so we'll have that at some point.
I listened to this conversation, it's very interesting and thought-provoking. The thing that's in my mind is what we really need to focus on as much as this is finding, make sure we have good officers. Find good officers, good people to be your officers and train them well. Do those two things. Do those two things.
Well, the city attorney report I was going to give, I told you before that we probably weren't going to have any court proceedings until mid to late July. Today, we had a telephone hearing over the injunction application filed against the 2080 agency ambulance service. And the court got the three defense attorneys together with the attorney from Des Moines for the plaintiff, allowed us a half hour to make our legal arguments only. There was no testimony, there was no evidence presented. And essentially, we divided up our 15 minutes of that between three of us, each making arguments that we talked about before, but no idea how soon we'll have a ruling from the judge on whether there's anything to the injunction that was sought. But we just raised basically defenses that it was prematurely filed and then after it was filed, it was moot because we gave them the open meetings transcript and tapes when it was time to do that. Other than that, we had some other things. We had like 10 or 12 affirmative defenses, which I've mentioned to you in the past, but you can't get a lot said in 15 minutes, at least I can't. At that point, we did have an argument I didn't expect to have for another month. The court's going to open up to person-to-person July 1st. That's sooner than I thought. And we'll probably, if the court allows any part of the injunctive relief that was argued for today by the plaintiff, we'll probably have another hearing the last week of July, sometime after July 20th, about a motion to dismiss that we've got that wasn't heard today. So, that's where we are in that litigation. That's all I intended to talk about, but this has been fascinating sitting here, so...
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so let's go to committee and board reports, franchise, environmental franchise, we've already talked about that.
Yeah, I just would like to remind the council that we'll still have on the table the debate about the charges for billing and salary and the balance for that fund. So, just, they'll come back later this fall.
Okay, great, thank you. And Michael?
So, a couple of our department heads expressed concern over this idea of ever allowing any sort of grass longer than 10 inches. And I did some research and just to set their anxious minds at ease, it is not, it's not a situation where someone can just let their, whatever they've got growing, grow and call it prairie. Cities that do this, like the city of West Des Moines, they have a 10-inch height for turf, so that would be grass or anything that needs to be mowed. And it can go up to 20 inches, but you need a permit and you have to prove that what you're planting is either native prairie or pollinator. So, again, this is very restrictive and each year, that 20 inches has to be brought down to under 10, either through burning or mowing. And there would have to be some sort of certification process for whoever's keeping this pollinator or prairie, to have once a year, someone come in during the growing season and say, "Yeah, this is 90 to 95 percent, this, not a bunch of weeds." So, again, this isn't something most people are going to try to pull in their backyard. This is more open for things like schools or people at the hospital or somebody has a large area where they want to do a native planting. So, again, I'm not pursuing this unless the gentleman who called last week contacts me, which he hasn't yet. So, don't expect this to come to property committee, but at the same time, if it were, there's so many restrictions that it would not be something that you would see the average homeowner being able to take advantage of. It's meant more for larger-scale projects within city limits. It may still be worth exploring it sometime, but I just want to let you know, it's not anything that's going to change our code and open things up to a lot of unkept, crazy-looking, very long grass yards.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate that. Administrator in the department reports?
I talked with Chris Estle for our future meetings. Chris is recommending that we maintain what we're doing now until further notice, probably waiting to see what the governor comes out with here around the first of the month. I'll keep in contact with her to see if we're going to change. We actually have a little bit of time between July 1st and our first meeting on the 13th if we are going to change or come up to a public, have a public meeting different than what we're doing right now. In regards to our conversation with Chief Thomas, we've had a few budget questions or had some more just basic defund the police emails or phone calls. I actually would recommend, I have them contact me to have a budget discussion. To me, a defund the police statement is pretty vague and broad. So, if they want to have a conversation and discuss what we could do differently, I would love to have that conversation with them, but also try to educate them on what our budget is and can do compared to who else funds other projects and programs rather than just the city. So, if you want to send them to me rather than spend time doing that, you're more than welcome to do that. We finalized our fire truck purchase. Wow, we're finishing up the paperwork that, most of it should be sent off today. We're getting the insurance information sent to them also, so that's pretty much finished. The good news is, is we did purchase the DOT property. I will be working with our city engineer. We're going to also be trying to find someone that could help us possibly look for some grants and do some other funding things to see what we can do with the possibility of the new fire station so that we can keep this as budget-neutral as we possibly can. We know it's going to cost money. We've already budgeted some money, but we want to try and keep that within reason, too. So, I will, we don't have good numbers for you. We've got ballpark numbers, so we're going to continue to work for the future to get you better numbers for that. So, that's all I have.
Can you disclose that bid price or no? I don't know if that's...
Two thirty-five.
It was sent to us.
How did it go?
Public information.
I'm curious how it went.
We purchased the property for $235,000.
It was online?
Yeah.
Okay. Were there somebody out there who was interested as well?
Yes, there were actually for the, I would say, in the last 10 minutes, there were four betters. And then there were two.
And then there was one.
And then there was us.
It was an interesting auction. So...
Great.
It went well, so...
Melanie?
All right, Jason, if you'll bring up that 20-minute presentation on Highway One, I'll get started.
Pull the plug.
Just a few things on the project update for everyone. On step two, it may seem like the contractor's jumping from one side of town to the other. That is because they have multiple crews working. They have one crew that is doing the tunneling or the underground boring under the roads and then another crew laying the pipe. So, for example, the boring crews were working near Forest Park and under the railroad this last month. Now, there's not going to be anything going on in that area. Next month, they'll pick up again. So, that's why you're seeing crews kind of working everywhere on this project, but they are still progressing very nicely with not a lot of, you know, no real major unforeseen things that are holding up the progress. Waste water treatment plant, we're not ready to close out the first part of the project, but we are getting close. We're working with USDA to do a partial release of retainage. So, the original scope of the project is all done except for some paperwork. So, yay, we'll have a celebration when it's actually all done, but the big portion of it is completed. On Highway One, we had some good progress this month as well, that Shive Hattery submitted the preliminary plans to the DOT. This is a step that's necessary before we start the land acquisition process. And I do have those drawings in my office that if anyone has particular concerns or wondering how we're, you know, how the sidewalk looks here or there, we do have some preliminary ideas going forward. We will eventually have to have a public hearing regarding the land acquisition of that project here in a few months. Then on Ninth and Burlington, this was a DOT safety grant project to do curb ramp and pedestrian improvements at that intersection. They were looking to start that this week. I did not touch base with them today to see if that was still the plan.
It is cutting.
They did some cutting, okay. So, they have started on that work. And again, that project's being funded with DOT safety grants. And then lastly, starting after the 4th of July, city crews will be starting water main replacement on Carpenter, West Carpenter Avenue. So, this is a dead-end street off of Fourth. And again, the city crews are doing that. The main impact to residents will be that they'll not be able to park on the street during construction. And then, not on the project update, but kind of my other hat with the planning and zoning side of things, several weeks ago, the economic, or the council voted to send the concept of mixed use to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on the first Monday in June on this and they want to continue this discussion on June 6th at 6:30, the Planning and Zoning and the Economic Development...
July.
July 6th, thank you. The first Monday in July, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Economic Development Committee are going to have a work session to continue to discuss the mixed-use idea. We've invited some professionals, insurance agents, bankers to see how mixed use would affect funding and insurance and any of those kinds of things. So, they're continuing discussion, no real actions at this time, but it'll be a process and we will, of course, let the council know when we get to public hearing stages on all of that.
What time is that meeting, Melanie?
6:30, 6:30, yeah, July 6th.
Yep.
And that is all, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Melanie? Not, I've taken, I have a quick question before we adjourn.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Is there a plan in place for senior banners that are up coming down now that we're through graduation?
Coming down tomorrow.
There is a plan.
And I'm going to give them over to Josie.
Josie? Okay. I just knew, I had noticed some of them were getting a little wind beaten and I didn't know if we had a plan in place.
We're waiting till after...
Fake graduation.
Whatever you want to call it.
Friday.
The graduation that didn't happen, but didn't happen, right?
Yeah.
Paul, do you have a question?
Just a point of correction. I think my very, my motion I moved at the beginning of the evening was to move to approve the minutes. I think the council understood what my motion was, was a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, I wanted to correct that. That's what I meant. I think that was the understanding.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Corinna, second by Ham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thanks, everybody.